Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Welcome, everybody. First thing on our, on our agenda today is we're gonna swear in our new city council person, so. All right, ready to write in? And I, I Kristen Rode.
Aye, Kristen Rode.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of state council member.
Discharge all of the duties of the office of state council member.
In Hampton as now or hereafter required by law.
In Hampton now or hereafter required by law.
All right, we're full staffed again, so here we go. Next item up is to approve the agenda, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is posted 24 hours prior to the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Ms. Greifey. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next we have the leadership statement. I'll just read that for you. The city of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner and consistent with these principles. Thank you. Next item, we didn't have a workshop this week, we've kind of forego that and move the council meeting to tonight. So our next item up is the public comment. So has anybody got any public comment for us today? Okay, not hearing any, we will move on. We have no public hearings, we have no old business. Do, we'll get right to the new business here. First item here is the consider the fence quotes for the skate park. And I'm guessing Mr. Tar, Mr. Dunn has that because Mr. Tar is not with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, should we do a sound check with Councilman Lamos quick?
Mr. Lamos, can you hear us?
Hello.
Okay, we're good, thank you.
Thank you. So Doug reached out to River City Fence and received three price quotes. You also have photos of the three different types of fence. The first fence is a cedar wood privacy fence. The price quote is for 96 foot in length, six foot tall, dog-eared cedar wood privacy fence. Price quote is $4,520. The second quote is for a, the same length and width, uh, width, 96 feet by six feet tall, Chesterfield vinyl privacy fence with almond posts and rails and clay pickets, The third one is the same length and width, Chesterfield textured Brazilian blend vinyl privacy fence. I think that's the two-tone color, $8,870.19. And I would just turn it over to the council for discussion.
I'd like to.
Yes, Ms. Greifey.
Um, I like the second one. It's right there in the middle price-wise. That dog-eared cedar privacy fence, we know doesn't hold up very long and it looks like, it doesn't look very good after a few years. But I do like the second one.
All right, so we got, so we got one, one vote so far. Mr. Palmer?
I was out there today, went out with Supervisor Lukensmeyer just to take a gander at things and, and we liked that second one as well. But to show either ownership or privacy, I'd like if they would not only have the fence this way, but like an eight-foot wing on each side and like a, at least a 90-degree angle or at a minimum 45-degree angle, but a 90-degree angle would be better. It just kind of encapsulates the, the skate park on its own, it's just not a random fence somebody put up, but it shows like it owns that skate park.
I think about a, I think if you look at the email regarding the prices, it looks like that the, they might be switched in the, in our packet here. The center, that second one price-wise is actually the clay one with the white posts. So I just want to make sure everybody.
Yeah, it is, I'm sorry.
Make sure we got the right ones.
I have the third one as the.
You mean this one?
Yeah, it's showing as the third one on your packet.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Okay, and that's actually the second one.
It's actually the second one, yes.
The third one here.
So I just want to make sure we're talking about the same fence. It's the middle road.
Looking fence two.
So the last, just to clarify, so the last one of the photos is the second in the email for the price.
Price-wise, yep.
Okay.
It's got the almond post.
Right, okay.
That section at the end.
I guess, I guess in my opinion, I, I like that almond one, the, the third picture. And you said it's the second price, and I, I was there today too and I agree with Councilman Palmer. I think we should put, like at a right angle, for I don't know, however many feet, just to, I think sort of enclose that a little more. You're not enclosing the whole thing, but I really think we should have the side panels on that too.
So maybe, so maybe like the first section, how that.
Yeah, just sort of like that one picture and then bring it down a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, just put this section on.
For the corner.
And have it.
I like that too.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Lamos.
Uh, I have got a couple of questions. Where's the other bids? Isn't it customary to have more than one bid? And where's the money coming from? We never budgeted anything for a fence.
Yeah, that's correct. It wasn't budgeted for, it would just, it would just have to come out of the parks budget.
Is there any way staff could put that fence up?
Um, possibly, but um, I don't know that they would have the time to do it, I don't know when it would get done, but.
Yeah, well.
Wouldn't that jeopardize a warranty?
Possibly, yeah, I don't know how that would impact a warranty, like Jim's questioning, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I received an email from Doug today about that specific question. And he said the city staff is not versed in fence installation nor wood scheduling work for us to do it. That's what he was, was emailed to me from Doug Tar today.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to agree with that. I think we want to have somebody professionally install it so it's done correctly. And if there's any warranty, yeah, Jim?
And it, I think we might have to check the quote as far as if we decide to add that additional aid. I think then there would be an additional cost to that.
I'm sure there would be.
Because I don't think that is included in that email.
Yep.
It's just the straight 96 feet.
Yeah.
Correct.
Exactly.
Have any of these been shown to the family?
I believe they have, yes.
They have, and what did they like?
They didn't, they didn't indicate anything. I think Mr. Lukensmeyer was with us and we had talked about this, the one with the almond post, posts.
And property owners here too, so.
Yeah.
Dick, do you want to come up with them and, and offer the information that you have on this?
Yeah, we, we set it up, you know, on the.
This is one Belo.
Yeah, and it's one Belo. And then, thank you very much because you, you listen to requests for us. It's like, okay, number one, you know, we, we live in the very, very bad things for the new generation, you know? And it's good they have something to do instead of the phone violence or something, you know? They have place to, to play. Because now it's a few, few, few guys, you know, younger, 10, 15 years they play now, start playing now, like six. And then I, I see them, they, they enjoy and they say, okay, I'm happy, you know? They ski for maybe one hour, though, no technology in his hand, you know? And then only, only one thing, you know, the one young boy coming to see me say, hey, can he grab the potato chips back, you know, empty and some water, bottled water and empty? Hey, can I use your trash? Because I have trash on this outside. And yes, I say, yeah, of course, throw away, you know? So we, we need to request, you know, one trash clean in the area or something they can see, you know?
Yeah.
But yeah, we, Mr. Lukensmeyer helped me, you know, about the fence. We measured it yesterday and today, the mayor and him in the area. So we, we decide which fence I'd like to put in there. And so at least everything, everything going to be good, you know, so. And beside, we, she showed me the area, well, memorial to my, my son, you know, the veterans, you know? He passed away last month. And yeah, so we set it up, everything. So thank you very much and support us and support to the, the town, you know? Because one of the reasons I stay in Iowa, when I moved from Florida, I used to be in Florida for 15 years. When I moved to Flor, to Iowa, because my kids, they enjoy, like it. Because three months later, when I, when I stayed, when I stayed living in Hampton, I want to, I want to back to Florida because we live in West Palm Beach, you know, that nice place. And the owner house over there also, nice area. So my, my kids, they say, no, this is the place where I'd like to stay, you know, for many. They told me many reasons, you know? Festival safety, school, chores, we had 20 years in the gospel, gospel chores, you know, for 20 years. And then, and I say, okay, no choice, so I stay with them. But yeah, so 20 years now, the new year addition, it's my grandkids here, you know, 15 years, 12 years and less. So yeah, I'm happy to stay with Iowa and Hampton, you know, Hampton, Iowa.
All right, thank you.
We choose, we choose one of the fence. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
We request like, and by the end, you know, eight foot one side. I think it's, you know, it's everything, everything is okay.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Two other notes that Juan and I have spoken about, he's fully in favor also, as Doug and Ron had, had said, that the fence line will not go on, the fence will not go on the property line.
Right.
The offset so that the city will be maintaining both sides of the fence, which would be a good thing.
Yes.
And the other thing is that the Bello family would like to thank each one of you who has already donated for this memorial bench.
Yeah, for the memorial bench, yes. Thank you.
And we would be putting a trash can, that city-owned trash can there.
Right, right.
Take care of.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. So like I said, we, somebody mentioned that we, there is an additional cost for us to put the, the two ends on that. I don't remember what the cost was for sure, but. And Barry, Barry, yeah, Barry, to your point for multiple bibs, bids, I can't speak with Doug, for Doug, on whether, whether he went out and wrenched out to other companies or not at this point.
Yeah, I, I don't think he did. Typically, we utilize River City Fence, but I don't think he did talk to anybody else.
Okay. So.
One of the, one of the reasons that you went was because of the warranty. Do you happen to know what that warranty is on that fence at River City, what they're offering for a warranty?
I do not.
I do not, no, no, I don't, not sure if they mentioned it to Doug or not, and he's ill, so otherwise he'd be here.
All right.
Well, as far as putting the fence up, in my opinion, I think if we're buying the fence from them, let them, they're the professionals and let them put the fence up.
Yeah.
Because I go, I don't think our staff has the time.
Correct.
To put a fence up and they've said themselves they aren't able, I mean, as far as to maybe do the quality job that a fence professional can do.
Exactly, I have to agree with that. So we basically, we've got the kind of identified the fence that we'd like to put in there. We're, like I said, there's going to be more, additional cost. So at this point, you know, I don't know what that additional cost is. I want to say $71 per lineal foot or something like that, but don't quote me. So at this point, maybe, you know, we've, we've narrowed it down, maybe we table this until Doug can talk about, is here, can do some more, you know, send these questions with him or to him.
Was it at one time, you know, Doug thought there might be some savings with the, with the work and like the pad, the con, the asphalt? Because the base was.
That's true, we haven't.
Already there, so there might be some savings that, yes, we budgeted, but we could use that savings would possibly pay for the fence.
That's true, yeah.
So I don't know if you've got any.
We don't have the final tally yet, so, but that's, that's true. The, yeah, they felt that it was going to come in less than what they estimated, so we can put, put whatever it is towards this.
Yeah.
And I know we're, we're talking primarily about the fence, but I was there today too and I'm thinking finishing that off, you know, there's rock around there, I, I think it should, we should not just have rock. I think we should do like dirt and grass because I don't think rocks and skate parks will go along very well.
Right.
And just knowing, you know, how kids can be, a lot of those rocks will end up on the,
Yeah.
On the skate park itself, so I'm thinking we should finish that off with like a grass. Because there's some deep ruts there now just from the construction, so it'll have to be leveled off anyway. So I think we should put some dirt in there and.
I think there's, I think there's other, you know, some questions that need to be answered. With the, for the park itself. You know, like right now, we're just kind of focusing on the fence and then there is other stuff that we're going to have to do.
Such as placement of the.
Yep, exactly. So we can put that on another workshop and, and get that all nailed down too. So at this point, I guess how you guys want to proceed with this? If we want to table this and give Doug, put this on our next.
I think new business to me just means it was up for discussion and we had a discussion and move along and we'll, we'll take care of it later.
Yep.
Get the price for that side, those wings or whatever you want to call them.
Yep.
So we'll do that then. We'll just, we'll just table it for tonight and, and move, give it Doug and then we'll move it, move it forward after that. So we did get one piece taken care of, so we know which fence we want. All right. Next item, we're going to move on down to the claims, got to pay some bills. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims as submitted by staffs in the amount of $200,186.47.
I'd like to make that motion.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Holmstrom, second by Ms. Rudy, Rude? I'll get it. Mr. Rode, Miss Rudy. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. I got you, Barry.
And four.
All right, next item up is the adoption of resolution. This is Resolution 2025-15. This is a resolution approving and authorizing sanitary sewer agreements with the Iowa Department of DNR and Bead's Lake Homeowners Association. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just review the wording of the resolution and then we'll have the DNR say a few words and answer any questions. This resolution approves and authorizes sanitary sewer agreements with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and the Bead's Lake Homeowners Association. Whereas Iowa Code Section 364.42 allows the city to provide utility service outside the state limits by contract. Whereas the Iowa Department of Natural Resources has requested permission to connect Bead's Lake State Park to the city's sanitary sewer system. And whereas the Bead's Lake Homeowners Association Incorporated has also requested permission to connect their neighborhood to the city's sanitary sewer system. And whereas the city of Hampton's sanitary sewer system has sufficient capacity to accommodate the flow from these two areas. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of city Hampton, Iowa, that the sanitary sewer agreement between the city and the Iowa DNR outlining the terms and conditions under which the city will provide sanitary sewer service to Bead's Lake State Park is hereby approved. That the sanitary sewer agreement between the city and the Bead's Lake Homeowners Association Incorporated outlining the terms and conditions under which the city will provide sanitary sewer service is hereby approved. And I would now turn it over to Heath. Okay, thank you, Heath.
Thank you for your time and consideration of this, this item. So we at, so I'm Heath Delzel. I am the area district engineer for the Department of Natural Resources with Dietrich Detman. She's the parks supervisor, district supervisor for this area. So at Bead's Lake, we currently treat our wastewater with a two-cell lagoon. Over the years, our discharge requirements, which is the, the chemical composition of the treated effluent changes, and our current two-cell lagoon will not meet the newer discharge requirements. So we either have to upgrade our lagoon or what we would like to do would be to connect into the city sewer and have the city treat our system and then we get out of the sewer treatment business. Our staff can focus more on camping and interpretive activities for, for the public. So right now, our facilities, for the most part, include a park office, a lodge, a campground. Our wastewater facilities also treat the wastewater coming from the adjacent homeowners association, which is about 25 houses. Right now, all of that goes to our lagoon, gets treated and then gets discharged into adjacent stream. So if, if the council would approve this, the department would move forward with constructing a HDPE sewer force main that would connect the state park facilities to a city manhole right by the county fairgrounds. The, the department would be responsible for all construction fees, all maintenance. The, the ownership of that pipe would remain with the department. So if there's any future issues, the department retains that responsibility. I think that's it in a nutshell, but as an engineer, I'm always happy to talk about my work, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
All right.
Address them.
Thank you. Any questions for Heath?
I got a couple.
Mr. Holmstrom?
Just, just out of curiosity, if this is approved and it's taking place, what happens with that two-cell lagoon that you have? What, what's, what happens with that?
Right, so we will, we'll scrape out all the sludge, which is the deactivated solids of the waste. We'll pump the effluent. So it'll be treated at that point, so it'll be ready to discharge. We can continue discharging until the end of the calendar year. Anything remaining, we'll have to make sure it passes as our bacterial and E. coli tests and do a land application of that. And then we'll, we'll breach the dike of the lagoon and just let it gravity drain. So we really don't have a big plan, but we'll just make sure it doesn't turn into a frog or mosquito haven.
Everything will be treated before it's discharged, of course.
Yes, sir, yep.
All right.
Barry had a question.
Mr. Lamos?
Uh, when is the deadline for construction to be completed?
Yep, good question. So our, our discharge permit, our current discharge permit for our lagoons expires at the end of the calendar year. So we are required by a different branch of the DNR to have this system up and running. We're no longer allowed to discharge after December 31st. Final completion of the project, you know, from a construction standpoint includes final grading and seeding. Will likely, you know, again, if approved, will likely be completed in the spring. But we'd like to get all the mechanical stuff up and running by the end of the calendar year.
How many, what's the total footage of that line?
I think it's about three miles. I have the construction plans with me right here. 18,700, 18,070 feet. And that's a four-inch, I'm sorry, it's a PVC line, not high-density polyethylene.
What size would that be, four-inch?
Yes, sir.
Is there going to be any manholes between the connection point and the Bead's Lake?
Yes, so we will have a handful of air release valves. That's to, to handle any kind of accumulated gas that may de-gas itself from the, from the sewer. And let me take a look. We'll have seven of those.
Couple more questions.
Mm-hmm.
What's the average depth of the pipe going to be?
Uh, it will be, it will be below the frost line, so we're requiring it to be at least five feet deep. It won't be deeper than 10 feet.
Okay. Now, the map that we had, it didn't show a very good route. How, how is it going to get to the city manhole? Through the ditch or is it going to be down the county road or?
Yep, yep, so our waste treatment facilities are on the east end of the lake, they're right below the dam. So we will follow the county road on the, they'll start off on the east side and then it curves around. And then we'll be on the west side of that. It'll be in the roadway ditch. Then we'll follow Nettle Avenue south down to Highway 3. Once we get to Highway 3, we'll stay on the north side of Highway 3, again, staying in the, in the right-of-way. And then we'll, we'll turn south onto Olive Street where the, where the connection of the city manhole will be.
You go down the west side of Olive?
I believe so.
One more question.
Certainly.
What was the total, what was the total cost of the project?
Oh, shoot, you know, I thought about that coming down here. And I didn't have that ready for you, I apologize for that.
That's the only questions I have.
Thank you. This point of clarification, there's no cost to the city on this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Ron, will this require any additional lift stations or anything for the city?
No, it will not.
I'm almost there.
We'll give you a minute.
Okay. Okay, right now it's 1.7 million for our construction. That includes the, the demolition of the existing lagoons and some. of the existing lagoons and some, uh, gravity sewer manholes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lamos. Any other calls, any questions for the DNR guy? Not hearing any. You must've done a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in. So without hearing more questions, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 2025-15.
I move we approve.
I'll second it.
That motion by Mr. Light Davies, second by Ms. Greepy. This will be a call, roll, call, vote. That's my word of the day. Uh, Mr. Holmstrom.
Aye.
Ms. Rhodey.
Aye.
Ms. Greepy.
Aye.
Mr. Davies.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Lamos.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Resolution is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Next is the consent agenda, agenda. This is just approving the previous minutes as drafted, drafted from Thursday, June 26th, 2025, regular session and scheduling the next regular session for Thursday, July 24th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. I entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Holmstrom. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So we'll move to our staff reports. Chief Morrison, you're just in time.
Yeah, I'm just getting back to town. I was in court all day in Northwood. Um, just got back minutes before the meeting or a few minutes after. We have a busy week this week at the Franklin County Fair. We have the parade tomorrow and then we have events every night after that till Sunday. So it'll be busy week with the extra people in town. There'll be extra fender benders, extra everything. So, um, we'll be busy all week on that. We have started looking at First Street Southeast, Doug and I and Ron. Uh, we did write a property owner for, um, some vehicles and objects in the right of way. All those have been taken care of. Um, the street department went down there and sprayed and they're talking about running the grader over that. Um, but I don't know if that got done. I didn't get a chance to check that today. And then on the future workshop, we'll look at options for parking, no parking, so on and so forth. Um, we didn't have very many fireworks complaints on the third or fourth. There was one fireworks-related injury and then on Saturday we had, uh, one complaint. So other than that, it's been pretty quiet. And then if there's any questions.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Palmer?
Did you get a call about a, um, a swimming pool?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know. I don't know how many, uh, permits we've even had filed for that this summer, but, uh.
I don't know off the top of my head. We have some.
Yeah. And I didn't have a chance to, I haven't been in the office at all today.
And I said, you know, give them a chance after the fourth to get pretty solved.
But I can follow up with you.
The fence was all kicked in and at least the ladder was laying over on a side against the fence. So it wasn't like it was being left there, but anyway, your concern.
All right. Any, any other calls, questions for Chief Morrison? Not hearing any. Thanks, sir. Mr. Tarter is out this evening. So we will move over to Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to welcome Kristen and, uh, um, just I want to note that if Doug were here, he would, he would mention that the street sweeper will be following the parade to clean up any, uh, horse manure or candy wrappers. Yeah, lots of debris. So, um, be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions for Mr. Dunn? Not hearing any from, from Mr. Lamos. All right. Thanks, sir. Move on to council reports. Mr. Davies.
The only item just is in regards to the memorial fence, um, working on that, getting some prices and then looking for an entity like to collect the money because it won't be the city. And, um, I talked to Adam Akers about that and possibly the likes, through the veterans would be maybe collecting that money, but I have received some cash donations so far. So I'll let everyone know about that as soon as I have the final details. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Holmstrom.
Well, I too, I'd like to welcome Kristen to the city council and wish her nothing but the very best. It's nice not to be the newcomer anymore. Um, and I also would like to thank those responsible for the new sanitary, sanitary sewer agreement with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, the Bead's Lake Homeowners Association. I know it took a lot of time and effort to come about and it appears that this agreement is a win-win for everyone involved. The DNR, the Bead's Lake Homeowners Association and the City of Hampton. So congratulations on that. And I'm looking forward to all the excitement of the Franklin County Fair this week, but don't let the fun end there. Next week, Wednesday, July 16th or Friday, July 19th, from 1:00 to 3:30 PM each day, Trinity Lutheran Church is having an annual, their annual vacation Bible school. This year's theme is the epic Australian adventure. And to register, you can call the church or email them at trinityhamptonoffice@gmail.com. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lamos, he's with us.
No comment tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Palmer?
Uh, just want to welcome Kristen to the, the team up here. It's nice not to be the youngest one anymore.
Excuse me?
Just remember, Kristen, that the, uh, the first motion you did was to spend $200,000. Just keep that to yourself. Anyway, that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Greepy.
Welcome. I know I talk a lot about the flower baskets downtown and I come to every council meeting and I talk about it and I always forget to thank the city and the support that we get from the city. They take care of the gator for us, keeping the tank full, um, especially Jake Walker. I really appreciate that. And I'm sorry that Doug isn't here so I could give him a big hug because it sure is a load off of the chamber's shoulders. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Rhodey.
First, I would like to thank Mr. Hodge for his service to the community of Hampton. I would also like to say thank you for the award one council nomination. I'm honored and very grateful to represent the community. I care about the town and I look forward to listening, learning and doing my part to help. I also look forward to working with this great group of people. Thank you for your trust and confidence in me and it means a lot to have your support.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Report, Mayor's Report, I have a couple of items. Of course, first of all, well, welcome, Kristen. I thought I couldn't get you back in the first name or the second name now. But good to have you here and it'll, it's trial by, trial by fire, but we know you'll do a good job and we appreciate having you. Uh, the other item I have, um, I'm going to read a little something because I couldn't, I just need to write it. So I just wanted to say that the past hu- past 14 months have a, have placed several channel of challenges in my path that I would never have dreamed about that I had to face prior to April 30th, 2024. Things that I have taken granted for so many years, like speaking simple sentences, printing a note, remembering my name and my birthday, which I've got it down now, but, um, knowing what day it is and counting the town, counting, counting to 10. And now I'm clear up to like 50. So we keep, you know, a little over a year, we're, we're making progress. Um, the phrase, your life can change overnight now has a much more distinct meaning to me, meaning to me. Um, so with the, with the, the support that my, of my family, especially my loving wife Tammy, which God only knows how she does that, but, um, with the, the support of the Hampel City Hampton City Council, the entire city has staff and all the people in our wonderful community of Hampton, I've been blessed with the chance to continue living, living a pretty normal life and to continue serving as mayor of Hampton. After, after much thought over the past 14 months, I have decided to run for reelection as your mayor of Hampton. I feel that we've had, we've made has, has Debbie, steady progress over the past three-plus years and with your continued, continued support, I feel that we will be able to accomplish so much more in the near future and, and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I got. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this special regular session.
So moved.
That motion by Ms. Greepy, second by Ms. Rhodey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Hey, Mark, don't go away. I got to talk to you.